It is Tuesday, January twenty fifth. It is seven thirty. We'll start the school committee meeting. I would like to remind everyone that we are televised on WMCTV TV and we are streaming. So having said that, call this meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you can all rise.
I.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm leaving. I'll be back later. All right. We have no presentations today, so we'll move all the way down to item number six, which is a superintendent's report. So Superintendent Murphy?
Thank you, Mayor Christian. Attached to my report is the Assavet Valley Collaborative School Committee update, which is the end of the year update for your review. I also am thrilled to announce that the Jarek School English Learner Teacher Erin Butler was recently selected as the Marlboro Public Schools two thousand and twenty-four Teacher of the Year by the United Brethren of Freemasons. Sarah Peak Marlboro Early Childhood Teacher and Maria Vigent Kane School Reading Teacher were named finalists. An award ceremony took place on Wednesday, June twelfth at the Masonic Lodge. Congratulations to Erin, Sarah, and Maria. On Thursday, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, I met with members from the citywide parent teacher organizations, also known as the PTOs. Topics of this meeting included field trips, digitizing quarries, the transition from grade five to Whitcomb School, and increasing parent partnerships. Our next meeting is scheduled for August twenty-first. I'm going to add that one of the areas that we want to focus on is the PTOs are asking for support in communicating with families because we have that common goal of increasing communication and collaboration. And so we wanted to make sure that we met again before school started because there's some questions about talking points and how that potentially can be used. It's not a tool that we use to communicate our blast out on a school-wide level generally. We want consistency and the role of the new website and how we're going to be using that platform to communicate. And they will be able to send out messages in a number of different ways. So waiting till we have more information on that. Speaking of talking points, in the fall, the Marlboro Public Schools launched the use of talking points across the district. Our goal was to expand our two-way communication with families. Talking points allowed us to introduce all families to one platform that is used in every classroom in the district. Our goal for FY twenty-five will be to send receive one million messages. High school teachers will also be able to message students directly for homework reminder and activities. Marlboro Public Schools first-year talking point stats. Students in the system, five thousand one hundred and eighty-four. Parent contacts, four thousand two hundred and seventy-nine. Teachers and staff, four hundred and ninety-two. In total messages sent this past school year, eight hundred and five thousand messages, three hundred and forty-five. Finally, I wanted to take a couple of minutes to talk about, oh, I have two things. First, the pre-K to twelve student and staff handbooks. On June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, school committee meeting, a new policy, Policy CF, Approval of Handbooks and Directives, was approved by the committee. The Marlboro High School pre-K to eight handbooks and all pre-K to eight family guides have been submitted for your approval. So we're talking about different types of handbooks. At the high school, this has been annually the one handbook that has been approved by the school committee. At the pre-K to eight, we have legal responsibilities. So we have the code of conduct and we have all of the legal, this is the contact, contract that is between every family and the schools. So this talks about the common expectations. It also covers legally thirty-seven H, thirty-seven H and a half, and thirty-seven H and three quarters, which are the three major school discipline laws, as well as bullying. Then, you're also submitted each of at the elementary pre-K to eight because they have one rules. They each have their own personalities. They all have, welcome to our family, welcome to our community. This is how you drop off. This is how you pick up. And there's also, we don't have a policy for it. We don't have an official law. Cell phones are an important expectation that is in every single one of these. And in policy, we were also talking about the fact there is also only applies to elementary moving within the district. There are certain school committee policies. So those are important factors that are in there. So that is what has been submitted to you. These handbooks will need to be updated throughout the summer once our new website is launched next month. Links to policy and our other important district information is not available at this time. School-specific family guides will also need to be updated throughout the summer. For example, there's been a lot of discussions about drop off and pickup at Jarek School. If there's revisions to that, that would have to be included, but that's going to take some time. They are being submitted tonight to comply with the new policy so that documents can begin to be translated prior to the first day of school. It should be also be noted that the principles of each building create information for parents in a variety of interactive ways. Family presentations created in the Book Creator App, which is a favorite tool of many of our elementary principals, have not printed correctly. Human Resource Director Patty Brown is currently reviewing all building-based employee handbooks. I'm requesting a July or early August meeting for a review and approval of those handbooks as well. Employees' policies will have to be linked or inserted in each building-based handbook. Once again, those links usually go directly to our website and our new website will not be live or completely. We're still working on updating some of those policies. In the past, the Marlboro High School Student Handbook has been approved annually by the school committee. Policy CF states, "School committee approval will be necessary for any handbook that pertain to required standards of conduct for employees or students." All of our handbooks and guides for families, students, and employees contain information regarding our expectations for student and staff conduct. So we submitted more maybe than is necessary, but we wanted to make sure that we were complying, were rule followers and were complying with the policy. And then finally, should note that I have also attached to my report the end of the year report on donations, gifts, and grants to the school department during FY twenty-four school year. I'm grateful to the many individuals and companies that support the Marlboro Schools.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes?
Shocker. So PTO meeting for the twenty-first of August, do they have a time or it's just, it will be moving forward?
Citywide PTO, I think we're starting once again at five-thirty. And we have scheduled it to go to seven this time because we realized an hour is not enough time. And we have a combo, so the PTO members can join me in my conference room, but we also have the board where people can also teams in. And a number of citywide PTO members did that for this meeting, so we thought it worked well.
Great. And then second was, thank you for the submission of the handbooks. Just so everyone knows, in our policy meeting yesterday, we talked about that it probably would be helpful if the family books that are created for each school was probably referenced more as guidebooks as opposed to handbooks because it allows for a little bit of delineation since that there needs to be some of the specialty items, if you will, that are very school-specific. And that way the handbooks can be a little bit more on their own, that are, they're meaning our policy and codes that are specific around legalities and such. I have spent the time on going through all of the handbooks and guidebooks so that I could start doing the cross-referencing of all of the policy name and clout, name and clout, I never say that right, whatever, the numbering and lettering to make sure that they line up. There are a number of things that I'll need to make sure that we get to whomever is really going to be taking care of each of the documents from a consistency standpoint, such as some of the things that we presented to you all where we're trying to make it gender neutral. We should really be consistent with that same situation within the handbooks. So I've already gone through both of the handbook situations and outlined that. And as well, which you can see my little scribbling, put together the new names. And there are two situations where, such as the procedures for school building visitors, that no longer exists within a policy situation, so that would need to be removed, noting a policy. And as well, there's no food service charging policy anymore. So those are two areas which can be commented on, but really would not be referencing a policy at that point. So I wanted you all to be aware, if it's okay with you. I felt like it might be best to just work directly with the superintendent to make sure that we are lining everything up. And link-wise, I did have a conversation with Mike Lacerette, who is really doing all of the website. And he's already in the process of, as we approve the policies, he can then get everything right in place. And we've figured out a really great process, so I can continue moving things over. And in July, my hope would be that we will create some special school committee meetings that will tag on to when there's a negotiation subcommittee meeting so that either before or after some of those meetings, whomever can attend would be able to help us to put out the first reads on a number of the policies. So then when we have our special meeting the end of July, we could then create an opportunity for us to officially vote and follow our normal process of a first read and the voting. So I just wanted to give you all a heads up because we were trying to find a good way to make sure we were following our process and that we would be able to meet appropriately, having a quorum with something that would line up. And then we will post as appropriate. Okay? Thank you.
Yes?
I just want to thank all of the private donations for their contributions over the year. I mean, it was almost two hundred and fifty, it was over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cash and merch. And for all the people who worked hard to get a lot of them too. So it's very much appreciated and we hope you continue to support our schools.
Anything else? No? Okay. Moving on to Director of Finance and Operations Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Starting with the finances, the district continues to track in line with our twenty-four financial plan. A copy of the latest year-to-date budget report is included in the packet for review. Food service, again, we're continuing our upward trajectory. Food service participation for breakfast and lunch is up nine and eight percent respectively, year over year. I'd like to remind the community that the food service summer feeding program has already started. We have three community sites that started yesterday. Marlboro High School will continue through August one. Trinity Anglican Church at four seventy Lincoln Street will continue through August sixteenth. And the Marlboro Public Library through August sixteenth as well. We're also supporting our internal programs running in the schools. ECC Summer Program will have food service from July first to August first. The Good Now Enrichment Programs from Monday through Thursday, July one through August first. The Kane Boys and Girls Club has already started, will continue through August twenty-third. The Whitcomb Jump Start Program from July eighth through August first, that is Monday through Thursday as well. And the High School Enrichment Programs will operate from July first to August first. Since this is my last meeting with you folks, I'd like to, just a personal note, if you'd indulge me for thirty seconds. I'd like to thank the entire district leadership team, my staff, and the members of the committee for your moral support over these last few months. Life events have made my tenure shorter than I planned, but as I transition into retirement, I know you are in good hands as I pass the torch to Mr. Wells. I thank you for the opportunity to be part of this team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes? Good?
Okay, well, I'll talk for her. I know, you can, and you're going to, but, you know, we would really be remiss if we didn't say how terribly sorry that we are, that your tenure is not longer, yet we one hundred percent support the decision that you needed to make because you're part of our team and that's what we do, is we support each other through thick and thin. I think that's one of the benefits that I will say that I've found over the years of being a part of the Marlboro School Committee is that across the state, we're one of the school committees that actually everyone kind of looks, look towards because we function on the no surprises. And we make sure that we're doing the best that we can to be transparent and support each other and recognize that we all have strengths and weaknesses that we work off of each other to try to do the best that we can on behalf of the students and staff of the community. So thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for setting us up, like caring to set us up for success. And I know it didn't come easy needing to make the decision, yet I hope you know that we're still here and we're always going to be here to be a support system for you because you're part of our family. So thank you.
Good? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Scottson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are already beginning to talk about our summer leadership retreat, which will be August nineteenth and twentieth. During the retreat, roughly eighty staff members who are representing a variety of different areas of leadership in our school system will come together for two days of training and team building. We are planning to recalibrate our efforts with positive behavior interventions and supports, otherwise known as PBIS, continue to learn more about practices and structures related to building an equitable school system, and also participating in a team-building activity that will challenge us to work together even more effectively. We are hoping that our honorable mayor and school committee will be able to join us at the retreat this coming August. We also are starting to prepare for new staff orientation that will take place throughout the week of August nineteenth. That week, educators new to our district will be welcomed into our community through a variety of orientation activities and trainings. On Wednesday, August twenty-first, we will hold our general orientation in the Whitcomb Auditorium. And, Mr. Mayor, if you would join us for that, it would be much appreciated to welcome our new staff to the district. Staff will be introduced to a number of topics that range from human resources to school nursing. After that orientation day concludes, we are planning for our second annual new staff photo that was organized by our Communication Coordinator slash Social Media Manager, Ms. Gillian Moran. Finally, new educators will be trained in Tier One restorative justice practices on Thursday and Friday at the end of that week. Lindsay Castro, Supervisor of Social Emotional Learning, and her team of trainers will conduct two full-day sessions with roughly fifty to sixty new educators. This training will help sustain the system of restorative practices that we have introduced to the Marlboro Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns? Nope? Okay. Moving on to acceptance of minutes. Minutes of May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, school committee meeting.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept is on the table and seconded. Any questions, comments, concerns about the minutes of May twenty-eighth? Seeing none, all in favor. Approved. Moving on to minutes of June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, school committee meeting.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve is on the table and seconded. Any questions, comments, concerns on June eleventh meeting? Seeing none, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on, public comment. The public comment where someone from the audience can come up and speak. Please come up and make sure that the green light is on, and if you could state your name and your address, that would be great. So just push the button.
The light's on.
And you can move the mic down too, if it's too high. There you go.
I am Clay Umina and I am fourteen. I went to the Whitcomb Middle School and I wanted to discuss an issue that was in a previous meeting because I am a big participant in the music programs. And I wanted to discuss the ongoing changes that will be occurring for next year, for the Whitcomb specifically. Because, so I experienced the last three years since COVID of what it's been like to, like, all the changes that have been made year by year. And the changes that have been made haven't been effective. And they're trying to reduce the amount of days for music education next year by thirty days. So it's only going to be sixty days instead of ninety days, so that's half a year. And what we had this year was, it was a week on, a week off for music education. So we'd have a week of music and a week off of music. And what was happening is no one was excelling or making any progress with what we were learning because the way that it worked is you had to pick band, chorus, or orchestra. There was no fourth option. There was no, because music isn't for everybody. Not everybody wants to be in music. And the thing about middle schoolers is if they don't want to be a part of something, they're going to make that known. And it really stumped the kids who wanted to be there. It stumped the teachers because they didn't know what to do, so they seeked help from the administrators. And the administrators told them, hey, we keep having issues where your kids are getting in trouble. Just keep them in class. So they weren't getting any help that they needed. And by reducing the days that these kids are having to learn by thirty days, it's not going to help anybody. And considering the fact that the high school music department is so well-funded and they have such a great program, the kids who really do enjoy music are stuck with kids who don't want to be there. And that's not helping them learn at all. So when they get to high school, they're not going to be at the same level as the kids who have been in such a good and controlled environment for so long because these are kids who were experiencing the music program before COVID. And there were four music teachers then. There are three now. Drop two, Mr. Rosenthal is now going to work at the high school. The high school teacher is going to be the orchestra teacher for the middle school. So that worked out. But now they're bringing back general music. And the teachers, the three teachers that they have for music are now going to be teaching general music. So that's taking less time out of their planning for the actual, like, music classes that they were told they would be teaching. And I think having that fourth option for general music, it's, there's still kids who are not going to want to be there. And considering the fact that there are four PE teachers, I think it should be an option that the kids who don't want to be in music should be able to decide if they want to take extra gym or if they want to study block and sit in the library and like focus on things that they actually need considering a lot of the kids who do not want to be in music are struggling in other classes. So I think it should be an option to like, because it'd put less stress on everybody in the building that takes part in music because it would cause less stress on the teachers, the administrators. It would make the kids enjoy school more. And I feel like what they're doing now just isn't effective. And considering the fact they're getting rid of fifth-grade music, it's going to drop the level for music in the entire department more, like in four years, let's think. They're giving kids such a small amount of time to, like, really focus in and get what they need done so that they can be good and actually have experience. And I feel like music is a big part of school for people. And it's just not going to be what it needs to be, you know? And it's like they're going to go to high school and the kids who want to be there are going to stay, but they're not going to be where they need to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you do me one favor? Very slowly spell your name, first and last. Perfect. You're one to watch. So you're one to watch. You are well thought out. You're very articulate. You have a great sense of what you're discussing. So I appreciate you coming here today and expressing your concerns. They have been heard. So I'm gonna keep my eye on you. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
That was great. That was great. Okay. Anyone else from public comment? Public comment. Anyone else from public comment? Going twice. Public comment for the third time. Seeing none. Thank you, Clay. All righty, moving on. Action items and reports. The approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Marlboro School Committee and the Behavior Tech Union.
So earlier this evening, we met an executive session to review the new Behavior Tech contract for twenty-four through twenty-seven, and we voted unanimously with one abstention, because Earl came late, which is fine, to approve. And I would like to now make a motion to publicly accept the contract going forward.
Okay. Motion on the table to approve the MOU between the Marlboro School Committee and the BT Union, Behavior Tech Union, seconded. Questions, comments, concerns regarding? Seeing none.
I would, I would just like to thank Behavior Techs. It was a, a good, quick process with them, and I hope that they feel that it was a fair negotiation, and that we look forward to having many more and retaining many more.
You're here.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to surplus textbooks for humanities. Anyone want to speak about that?
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a request for the School Committee from Dr. Reyes, the sixth, grade six through twelve humanities supervisor. The current curriculum is being replaced. It's ten years old, and it does not map to the 2018 frameworks. So we're asking the School Committee vote to allow the grade six through twelve humanities supervisor to discard the current textbooks.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and seconded to discard the surplus of textbooks for humanities. Any questions, comments?
So, Superintendent, I'm asking this, and I understand you may not have the immediate information, but it, you know, when I saw the information about the investigating history, the new core curriculum, and then our earlier discussion about DESI kind of leading the charge on certain curriculum pushes, I then looked up the information and, and thought it was interesting because they were talking about it being for grades available for units, um, grades five, six, seven. And so I was just kind of curious, are we then going to be looking at this affecting our fifth graders? And also, and I know it's separate from the surplus, but it would be helpful.
It would be the plan. So investigating history is a, would require professional development, which Dr. Scazza has made arrangements for this summer. It is being piloted across the state, state in grades three and four as well.
Right.
This is on the very short list of DESI curriculum recommendations. It's very highly rated. We, I went to a presentation at the joint conference last November on this curriculum as well. But yes, that would be the plan. Keep in mind that those ELA teachers at the elementary school are implementing a brand-new literacy curriculum this year, and to do two new so in the same year is a little stressful.
And that's what was kind of hitting me, and that's why I was wondering, like, how much they were pushing that we needed to do this, or can we phase things in? So...
We can phase it in. We can also apply for the grants next year that would pay for some of the additional training.
Yeah, I, I think a phase-in process is, is best. There is a lot of voluntary interest in piloting or exploring. We had four grade-five teachers representing three of the four elementary schools attend a two-day overview this past June 20th and 21st. And Dr. Reyes is arranging for a training with TNTP August 8th and 9th, I believe, that would have all of our, I believe all our available, our sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade social studies teachers who quite honestly are craving a curriculum to unify those grade levels and kind of align the trajectory in that content area. So, there's an appetite. We're looking into it. As Superintendent Murphy stated, there's a very short list of what is endorsed and curated, but there, it seems to have merit and validity, and we're in the current stage of exploring it.
And, and just to add one more thing, it was on the list of recommendations that we had received from our earlier visits this year to be looking at the social studies curriculum. So it was number, on, one of the number of areas we were focused on.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yes. So I have two questions. One is, they've been talking about changing the social studies standards forever, but they haven't been changed, right? This is just...
No, I don't believe that the standards has been, have been changed since 2018. It, it is the curriculum resources that have been modified and planned for introduction into the schools, so, into the school systems. And there is one that addresses civics in eighth grade as well. I should mention, it's the Democratic Knowledge Project. So Dr. Reyes is also, so Dr. Reyes has made a pretty quick transition from a focus primarily and predominantly on ELA and literacy with our Tier One core programs that now span K through 10 to history and social studies because, quite honestly, it did go on the back burner a little bit this past school year. So, he's expediting his, um, his efforts to connect with resources and surrounding school communities to research what's available through the state in terms of training and grant funding. And he's also, as I had mentioned, solidified teachers who are willing to explore in the summer months these curriculum resources. So you do have investigating history in an eighth grade for civics, the Democratic Knowledge Project.
Um, can I also add, Dr. Reyes, with the last curriculum frameworks update in 2018, was a member of that committee.
That's right. I remember that.
So, um, he is very well-prepared. And there was a civics pilot for MCAS, an assessment, this past spring. So we do believe that finally the state is moving towards it being a tested area.
Interesting. So, and then my other question has to do with the, the obsolete books. Oftentimes, they get sent to other places that can use them. Is that the plan, or are they going to be recycled?
I think he has multiple plans. He would try to find another district that may use them. He may send them home with the, the students, just to have.
Okay.
Or the last resort would be recycle.
Okay. Excellent. Not in the landfill.
No.
Good. Thank you.
Anything else? No questions, comments?
No. Did we have a motion ready?
Motion in second, so all in favor? Motion carries. Surplus textbooks for Kane Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Kane Elementary Principal has submitted a request for authorization to donate library books that were taken out of service at least one year ago. That would not go to waste. They would not hit the landfill. Their intent is to set up a reading room at our primary shelter here in the city to, to help facilitate the education of those students we have there.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the surplus of textbooks in Kane Elementary School. Seconded, questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to 90. Handbooks.
So, thank you, Mayor Christian. As we discussed earlier, all schools are required to have student handbooks. I submitted the grade nine through twelve student handbook, the pre-K through eight, one handbook, and then each of the pre-K to eight family guides. Just wondering if we could get, I know there's been some discussion about coming back for some of the family guides. I don't know what, how the School Committee wants to move forward with approval. There's a lot of translations that need to be done.
Yes. Um, can I make a motion to approve with the knowledge that I'll be working closely with the superintendent and the building administrators to make sure that we have everything aligned as we continue to move forward with the website? So that way they can begin their translation and not have any holdup. And I could be the point person for the School Committee then.
We can also send out copies of the final versions before they get sent out publicly to all the families.
Yes.
I, I'm in favor of that. I just want to point out though, the Whitcomb was sent as a twenty-three, twenty-four handbook. She didn't...
She didn't update the...
Yeah, I saw that as well.
So, just, but, so, again, um, the only thing, I, I, you, you made a point earlier about that each of the elementaries is unique and individual, and I don't disagree with that. But I think, and I didn't pull out a spreadsheet and do anything, but I think if there are, let's use an example, that there are ten points that have to be covered in every building, that we have to make sure consistently that those, however they want to describe them, whether it's the pickup and the drop-off, and the, the cellphone, and the dismissal, and queries and that, that, that we are covering those things. They can do it in their own way they want to say it, and the own look they want to make it look like, but, um, ha, not having it and forgetting about it in a certain building isn't fair to the families as well. So...
We have multiple leadership meetings scheduled for the summer, so...
I figured.
It will be an agenda item. We'll go over.
So, motion to approve the handbooks, knowing that Mrs. Tennessee will be working with administration, and administration will be working, and that we will receive a copy of them prior to them going to translation, so that if we have any questions.
So this isn't the final, final then?
No.
None of the links are correct, and will not be till beginning of another month.
So it'll, it'll come back to the body for final approval?
It'll come back to you. So my hope would be that, for that meeting, aim would be that meeting in July 24th, I believe, that we have planned for an executive session.
I don't know if all the links will...
Agreed. And that's why, my aim right now is to try and make sure that we have everything lined up. The links may not be live, but yet the information should be able to be in there.
Right. The letters for the policies will be there.
And that's what I, that's what my intentions are to work with the administrators, so everything will be lined up. So literally, if you all approve, the full committee approves that meeting, then Mike Lassert can make everything live. So you will see it as it is supposed to go live, if that makes sense. It's a chicken or egg at this point. So we can't make it live until we approve it. So we have to approve it to then have him make it live.
He can have all the pages made and developed.
And that's, and that's what I'm doing, is I'm going to give him all of the, everything so he's ready to go bing. And then, and if you approve everything, then it goes live. If you have a problem with one or two, I make that adaptation, and he will as well. But that's, that's what we're trying to meet, is so that the end of July, you all would see that, because they have to go ahead and start the process of getting a good portion of it underway.
Yeah, but isn't there a way to do it on the back end and not make it live? So everything?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're doing. I'm provide, I'm going to provide everything once we coordinate. I'm going to provide everything so that Mike Lassert has everything.
I understand that. My, my, my hesitant is to approve something that's not final. That's where I'm hesitant.
Well, we don't have another meeting until after it has to be in parents' hands.
So that's why I'm asking, I'm making the motion to, to approve with the knowledge base that I will be that person, just like when we talked about the program of study, that Ms. Matthews was the point person on that. So it was knowing that there would be some modifications.
I understand.
Yeah.
The other piece of this is that Mrs. Tennessee and I talked yesterday about potentially moving forward, if this is going to be an annual approval, that we put an early August meeting on the calendar, just annually during the summer for that express purpose.
Exactly.
So when do these have to be out by, I guess? That's the question. What's the hard deadline?
First week of school.
A majority of them go out through email, but we also have to translate them and have paper copies for the families that do not have our app, our new app, are, have the ability to connect.
So it has to all be done by the first day of school? Or open door day.
No open door day.
Night. Open door night. Evening.
Evening.
New tradition. The Monday before they...
Yep. Okay.
Yeah. Tuesday.
Last week of August.
Twenty-seventh of August.
I, I got it. Thank you. Okay. I don't remember if there was a motion or not.
I made the motion.
Thank you. Is a motion on the table for all three?
All.
Student handbook, pre-K through eight, and pre-K family?
Yes.
And the high school.
Yes.
High school. Right. One, two, three. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussions? On favor? And I will oppose. Thank you.
I understand.
I just don't feel comfortable. We can have a meeting, but it's all good.
Have a meeting.
Yep. Moving on. All righty. Superintendent Evaluation.
It's that time of year. So I did send by email the composite. So this needs to be a public document, and since it didn't make it into the packet, should I send it to Patty?
Send it to Patty, and she'll make arrangements so that it will convert to the current website? Yeah, to the meeting notes.
Excellent. Thank you. So this document will be available for the publics on the website. So, um, starting with the Superintendent's goals, we have, um, the, the consensus was that the Superintendent has met all of her goals for this year. And there were, I, I, rather than reading all of the comments, I'm just going to read, like, one for each. Again, people can review this online if they want, but we could be here for quite a while if we read everything. So, overall, in regards to the goals and overall, one of the comments was, "It has been a very busy and productive year, and I believe that the work will lead to the growth and improvements we have been looking to achieve for some time. Working with DESI to evaluate our instructional practices, launching a new, hopefully more effective literacy program, strengthening the district's commitment to viewing activities at all levels through an equity lens, evaluating and improving our communication operations, and engaging in and successfully negotiating, negotiating union contracts with our faculty and staff have set us up for future success. Through it all, the Superintendent has challenged herself to confront conflict, become more culturally competent and open with her communications, and worked hard to align district goals at all levels. Going forward, working on bringing all faculty and staff on board with district goals, using the various tools being provided, and focusing on high achievement for everyone, positive improvements will be realized." The second session is the different standards. Overall, proficient on all. In the first category, instructional leadership, um, as I said, proficient. One of the comments... In the first category, instructional leadership, as I said, proficient. One of the comments, the person commented, did a quote first, "While I believe that there is intent to ensure we deliver rigorous instruction to all, I feel we have begun to let our fears of failure or even dropout at higher levels has led us to not hold all of our students to higher expectations. I understand that there are fragile transient, fragile transient ELs and students who need extra help. I believe our staff is doing everything in their power to deliver the best, but I also believe we can do a better job of not allowing disruptions to interfere or control the outcome. The above is what I wrote last year, and I still believe holds true in many ways. I'm very happy that the Desi work to clearly define effective instructional practices is taking place, and that the outcome with effective, will effectively raise the expectations of higher quality instruction. While evaluations are done consistently, I don't always believe we are holding our staff accountable for measured outcomes with their students. We continue to give our educators more tools to better instruction, but when we don't see improvement in test scores, we don't seem to address the problem." Sorry, I need a little water. Thank you. The standard number two, management and operations, again, proficient. When you review the things, you'll see this is a composite, so some of the individual things were mostly proficient, but some were exemplary, some were needs improvement, so it all kinds of, it all aggregates out to proficient. One of the comments, from an environment stand, oh, sorry, number two is management and operations, I said that. From an environment standpoint, MPS has made strides to improve the situation to support student learning and improve the safety needs of our staff. The yonder pouches have certainly made a lot of improvements at Whitcomb, and getting solid administration back leading the building is helping. Tier one, tier two, tier three support has been worked upon, yet it is still evident that there are behavioral, behavioral issues that continue to be challenges and are having an effect on our population, specifically affecting our middle school and high school. Our administration at each building and the assistant principals and guidance counselors and SACS need to work together with our staff so everyone is consistent. Our inconsistencies have caused us issues, and it's not that the superintendent has not tried, but somewhere there continues to be a break in the chain which needs to be fixed. I hope when we can get the information about the 2024 results around behavior and compare with 2022 and 2023, my hope is that there will be improvements, yet the data we just received is concerning. It is evident that we need to continue to be looking for good role models for our students, and to be hiring staff with bilingual capabilities, staff that can emulate the diverse population of our student body and show favorable outcomes to students that choose to put in the work. We have some truly dedicated staff, which is amazing, yet we do seem to have some staff that ride on the coattails of others and stir the pot, should they not be happy with something. I believe you all, moving forward with IBB, truly puts us in a better relationship with the union, but I do hope that Patty Brown is able to forge stronger relationships for retention of our stars. Many of the staff members often do anything possible to physically, emotionally, and mentally support their students. Conversely, there still is a population of our staff that is solely focused on the contract. How much time are they asked to help? How much are they getting paid? What is their job supposed to be? The buy-in seems to align with the 80/20 rule. Most in to help, some not, and the not needs to be noted, and maybe that there, that is where we really watch whether staff aren't fully invested. Maybe they should not be staying here, and we move on to people that are more committed to our student body and their needs. The third standard, also proficient, family and community. Rollout of the new website and app will be important undertaking in the next school year. Talking Points has set the stage for a consistent communication platform that is user-friendly and accessible to all stakeholders. Having a centrally located district calendar and easily understandable platform for all things MPS will help meet the district's communication goals. The relaunching of CPAC and the continuation of LPAC have been important to engaging families. Increased participation in PTO activities is positive. A focus on engaging more families and community members in the school council process would be a positive step in engagement. The superintendent has done a great job in increasing her face time in school activities and events at all levels. In addition, she has made herself available to meet with families by hosting coffees and attending PTO and other meetings. A continued focus on representation of MPS and the greater Marlboro community should be a goal going forward. And finally, number four, which is professional culture. Cultural proficiency and shared vision are two areas that are strong for you, Mary. As stated earlier, you have worked hard with much intention to get our district on track relative to A-Bar, and your involvement in the monthly Urban Superintendents Network is one noticeable point. Your commitment to high standards is evident, yet I do think that sometimes we all give in to, "They all have a lot on their plate." That was a quote. Just recently, when we were reviewing the DIP and SIPs, and hearing the differentiated instruction was going to be another focus with PD, et cetera, I get that the staff needs continual PD, but we have and are supposed to be providing differentiated instructions consistently to meet the needs of our population. If we are not continually challenging our students, providing rigor, then are we lowering the bar of our standards and expectations? I recognize that a portion of our students need a great amount of intervention to get grade level, much less excelling, yet we must push forward with high expectations and standards to challenge our students at every level. The communication in this section is still a work in progress. I see so many examples where you have been working to improve leading the district-wide goal of dealing with effective instructional practices, yet there have been additional opportunities to interface with the city council and community to be even more of a face for the district, where I feel you are still working on becoming more comfortable in that role. Huge strides made, yet continuation of work still needed. I think you've made huge strides in managing conflict. I've seen you step in to address areas of concern, whether it be with staff issues or community issues, and you have not shied away from addressing the needs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So overall, proficient?
Questions, comments, concerns?
One short thing. I just want to say, thank you, Mary, again, for another good year.
Agreed.
So this will be posted online, or it is already?
It is not yet, but I will, tonight, send it to the secretary, and we won't make that happen.
My concern with posting this is that there should be a guide or a chart, there's a lot of acronyms that a lot of people will probably not understand, and that needs to be discussed, so that's...
I guess I could try to make a glossary of terms.
That would be much appreciated. Thank you. Not to put more work on your plate, but...
That's okay.
Okay.
It's true. No, it's true.
Not the only one, I'm sure.
You are not.
Still struggling with education.
Okay. We do not vote, correct? Just for public confirmation? Okay, moving on. Policies for approval.
Thank you so much. So, moving forward on the policies, that would be for chapter E, and then chapter F. They were on the meeting agenda for our last meeting, for first read. So I'd like to make a motion to move forward with policy EB, safety program.
Are we taking them one by one, or are we going...
It's up to you all.
Whatever the motion is. Is there any changes throughout? Well, pretty straightforward.
Aside from the titles. Why don't you do, isn't that how we did it the last time? If there was anything substantive, we did those separately?
There really isn't something majorly substantial. There are a few little red marks that you would have seen through, and it was like, instead of crisis response, policy protocol, it was then emergency plans added in there.
Until you get to EF, and then that's EF and EFA are new.
Exactly. So that's...
Those should be separate.
And as mentioned previously, as we are going through all of the policies, we have been noting policies that we will need to come back to specifically around content. So, such as, I will say, the policy that is labeled EBD, face masks. That policy was put in place around COVID-19. Our thoughts, though, are that we don't want to get rid of this policy altogether in case we need it at some point. And so our hope is to go back and then really take out the COVID-19 references and turn it into more of a pandemic need. But again, we, we really could not get through all of this from a content standpoint. So that's just an example. So, if you all would like, I could make a motion to approve EB, EBA, EBB, EBC, EBD, EC, ED, EDA, and EE, which are all current policies on our current website with the minor modifications as noted.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion is on the table to approve nine F, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine on the agenda. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you. And so then, I would like to make a motion for approval of two new policies added to this section, which would be EF, which is district security relating to technology, and EFA, data and records retention. Both of these policies currently exist at MASC, which is our parent organization, and so we were taking these two pieces that we felt would be good for us to have within our policy manual. And that is what is before you tonight.
Okay. Is there a second? There is a motion on, second on the table to approve nine F on the agenda, and item 10 and 11. Questions, comments, concerns?
I just have a grammatical. Do you want it afterwards, or should I tell you now?
You can tell me now, and...
So on EF, the last sentence of the second paragraph says, "By adequate controls, commensuration," it should be commensurate with the sensitivity of the data.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So is there a motion to approve the amended EF policy?
Yes.
And seconded?
I would like to...
Seconded is okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor. Motion carries as amended.
Thank you. So, that's chapter E. Chapter F, you would have two policies in front of you, which would be FA and FB. I'd like to make a motion for approval of these two policies with the minor amendments as noted.
Okay. Motion is on the table to approve policy FA and policy FB. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All in favor? Motion carries. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alrighty, moving on to acceptance of donations and gifts.
Okay. It's okay. I was going to ask for a suspension of the rules to add an agenda item, but we can wait until the next...
Nine H.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
A, B, C, D, F, G, H?
Yes. You're good.
No. I forgot the alphabet for a second. Acceptance of donations and gifts, moving on. So O'Connor Studios for Goodnow Brothers Elementary School for $2,120.66. Also Keene Elementary School for $1,219.31. Motion to approve is on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, concerns regarding those two donations? Seeing none. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Alrighty. Again, O'Connor Studios for Richard Elementary School for $1,184.49, as well as O'Connor Studios for Jarck Elementary School for $1,713.15.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. Global Companies LLC from Marlboro High School for $1,045.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All in favor? Motion carries. Moving on to hope and comfort for MPS District as a whole for $1,000.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is on the table and seconded. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none. All in favor? Motion carries. Alrighty. Thank you, everyone. I like when they go smooth like that. Ms. Hennessy?
Thank you. I'd like to ask for a suspension of the rules, so we can add an agenda item. It would be agenda item nine H.
Let's, so there's a suspension on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
And any questions, comments, concerns about the suspension? Seeing none. All in favor of the suspending of the rules to add an item on the table? Motion carries. So...
So, thank you very much. So I'd like to add an agenda item for tonight, which was sent out. It was a donation of surplus equipment to Blackstone Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School, submitted by Dr. Dan Riley. And so it was a recommendation that the school committee grant permission for the Marlboro School District to donate equipment to Blackstone Valley Regional Vocational Tech High School. This equipment would no longer be able to be used at the high school, and would be really very beneficial to the engineering and robotics program at Blackstone Valley.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is on the table and seconded. Questions? Yes.
This is the equipment. It was referenced to a listing of pictures, and the gentleman from the Blackstone, there were no pictures of listing. I was just curious what it is.
It is technology that needs a very expensive upgrade in order to be used, that we don't have, but Blackstone Valley has. So it's old, grant-funded equipment that we got a number of years ago that were used in the engineering labs. Dr. Riley called me earlier today to make sure that I knew exactly what was going on.
Dr. Riley called me earlier today to make sure that I knew exactly what was going on. It would not be a one-time cost for us to upgrade the software. It would be a repeating cost, and it was something that, um, for, he didn't think would benefit Marlboro High School students, um, but Blackstone does have the ability to do it.
Not that I would probably technically understand, but anything more specific than that?
It's, it's, um, machinery tools, like to create for the robotics program and engineering.
We're getting closer to what I understand.
Drills and you, you program the computers to create the tool.
The light has come to the century. Thank you very much.
Any further questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, all in favor of the donation? Motion carries. Thank you. Alrighty, moving on to reports of school committee, school committee subcommittee. Some helpful. Policy.
Shocker.
Shocker.
Um, so we have had, um, two really successful meetings this week. And we are almost through all of the policy document. So, um, you will see more coming forward. We will be planning another meeting shortly so that we can finish out the remainder. And then, as mentioned earlier, it's my hope to, um, plan a special, um, meeting that will align to one of the upcoming negotiating meetings that you all have on the docket during July, so that hopefully we can then, um, put some of these policies in for first read to follow our policy around approvals, so that aiming to have a, a meeting at the end of the month for an action item for voting, and that way it would allow for these to go live. So, thank you very much.
Yes.
Negotiations will be continuing, not at the heavy pace that we were doing during the spring, but we do have negotiations going on all summer long, so that'll be continuing to happen.
That's it. Members' forum. Yes, Ms. Matthews?
I have read the warrant, but I will not be signing the warrant.
And I have read the warrant. I have a couple of questions afterwards, but then I will be approving the warrant on behalf of Mrs. Matthews tonight.
Because I am on the warrant, so I cannot sign it. But earlier, because all the tears are already flowing, I couldn't go on then. But I wanna say thank you. It's been a pleasure. And I wish you all the best. And the tears are coming again.
Now you do. Now you do. Yes, no, we do wanna wish you all the best.
Take a nameplate. I don't know what you would do with it. Take a nameplate. Keep putting on a golf cart. Oh, there we go. There we go. Just, just have director under it. Then it'll figure really important.
Anything else? Yes.
I was beginning to take it personally, because all the people who do finance have been leaving since I got on the school committee. And I was beginning ones because I was such a great person at Members that I've always, that's why I went into music, because in music you count to four and you can fall all over again. That's my teacher. And I wanna thank you for helping me count to four so many times, Tom. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I'm sorry to see you go, but I wish you all the best in whatever you're up to next. Thank you.
You always have a place here.
Happy retirement. Yes. Right, yes. Anything else? Members' forum. Favorite part of the night?
Last, last, uh, meeting of the year. I hope everyone has a nice summer. We will still be working.
Yeah, of this school year.
This is the last official, regular meeting.
So, motion to adjourn the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Motion to adjourn is on the table, seconded. Questions? Comments? Concerns? Seeing none? That is a wrap. We adjourn at, uh, eight forty, yeah, eight forty-one. We're done.